Well, I think we're set to go. I'd like to call the meeting to order. You have an agenda?
In my head.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
There's one on paper.
Did you email it in round six?
Yes.
No, I went to E-News though.
Oh.
Yeah, and I don't get it.
Email minutes?
I just got them.
Oh, okay.
I just got bets with hers and she sent them to Julie.
This is the, uh, my mistake. We went to Julie and Matt Ella.
Thank you.
These are edited by Betsy. But let's see, first we'll have the roll call and decide on who all is voting.
Richard Bennett.
Yes.
John Allen.
Here.
Larry Seaver.
Here.
Betsy Harding. Sarah Campbell, here. Darren Lovett. David Tredwell. Dee Davis.
Here.
Kathleen Doherty. Doherty.
No.
Mike Mallett.
No.
Scott Badger.
Here.
There are six people here.
So we will all vote. Go over the minutes for our last meeting. So these minutes were edited by Betsy. And the only place I saw any change was in some of the wording about the charrette at the Thompson House. But this would be probably a good time to figure out what to do about the minutes. This is supposed to go out in, I believe, 72 hours of a meeting. There's supposed to be minutes posted.
Seventy-two?
It is by law, unfortunately.
I thought it was a little longer than that.
And in order to do that, we really don't have time to edit or certainly not vote, you know, approve the minutes. So I think we pretty much have to put them out as unapproved.
They have more pending minutes?
Yeah, draft. They just say draft.
The draft?
Yeah. And that way, people can't hold us to any wording that we feel is incorrect or not accurate. And then we'll just go on the way we have. So I don't know what happened to Thorn survey. That should have been here to make the presentation for the Gabrielle Brown.
Someone's standing up.
Well, there it is. So I put that at the beginning because all these people are here just for that.
Are you going to approve the minute?
Oh, it's her. What do you think of those minutes?
It's gonna be cold chill.
Not the minutes.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The minutes stand approved. So now let's go on with the public hearing for the Gabrielle Brown lot line adjustment.
Okay. Now, I don't have a plan. I lent it to him. But the two owners, Laurie Gabriel and Darrell Brown, proposing boundary line adjustments. There are two shown in this plan, one between two parcels that Laurie owns and one between her parcel and Darrell's parcel. At this time, there is one dwelling on these properties, and that's Laurie's house. And there is a cabin on Mr. Brown's. And so they are proposing to make an exchange of land where the Browns will deed a small piece to Laurie, and she will deed a small piece to him. They have also made a mutual agreement for what they're calling a protected green zone, which is a small area on each of their parcels where they will not develop and they will have a mutual agreement if any trees are going to be cut. It will be mutually decided. That's sort of the brief summary, so if anyone has some specific questions.
I'm sorry, could you point out the two pieces that have been?
Okay, this, this piece right here is Laurie's, and this is Brown's. Laurie also owns this piece. She is making an exchange where from her house lot, she's adding to the small one. And then out of this is coming a piece that will be added to Brown's, this little piece here.
And that's the access to the road.
Northamptonshire.
Yes.
So this, this lot you said?
Yes.
So in other words, this lot ten will remain entirely wooded, is that what you're saying?
No, the, she's making that parcel larger, but the, the two areas that they're protecting are right here. This piece on Mr. Brown's and this piece on hers is what they're never, they've agreed not to develop. And they've agreed that if any trees are cut, it will be only trees mutually agreeable.
I see. So the entirely wooded is just the situation?
Is the present situation, that's correct.
And the reason being is to give him access to Northamptonshire?
Yes, he has a driveway along the Peters property and her property to come in this way, which I believe he does use to get to his cabin. But it's not the kind of thing that you'd ever really turn into a driveway if he decided that he needed a driveway and wanted something more substantial. So they made the agreement to do this exchange so that it will be more sensible for the use of that parcel.
So, where Girdra owns two, presently it's this plus here to the dotted line.
That's right.
And this large lot includes the triangle.
That's correct.
So that's, we should change it over.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have checks and checklists?
Checklists, yeah. Wood, yeah. Yes, that's correct.
It's Brown.
All right, does anyone at the table have any questions about what the scope of the adjustment is?
What's the size of that lot? Two point four four acres here.
You have the little X or this one?
The, this one.
This one, okay.
Just because that's the one giving up some land.
But it's also gaining land on, on the bottom side.
No, it's going to, isn't that a different lot?
That, isn't that top triangle going to?
Right.
Or is this?
Yes, that triangle is being added to that small one to make it bigger.
And then down here?
That's the piece that gets added to her large piece.
So Laurie Gabriel's getting two different pieces on two different lots. Okay, and then?
The one exchange is just between the two pieces she owns. The other exchange is between her parcel and Brown's parcel.
Looks straightforward.
Now, do our guests have any comment? Questions on this?
First, Kathleen, while Karen's, we live off the hill from the proposed area that gives the access from Northamptonshire Road. Could we just take a look at that?
Oh, sure.
With the survey markers and it looks to be about a forty foot that you're talking about. Are you?
Diane from Thorn surveys.
Oh, did you, did your?
It was not true.
Last date, it was a year ago April. Okay. So it'd be right here, is the plan for access. And we talked with the man doing the survey. It certainly gives you intent for a driveway.
Yeah.
Which just is a concern because we're right from here.
Oh, you guys. There it is. It's up right down, okay.
Yeah.
So certainly, we're just looking at all of the trees there that we love that provide coverage from the road and so forth. And I didn't know how wide a driveway is and what's that gonna do if they cut 20 feet of our, our view?
You know, where the, the two of them are making a decision to protect green on the other side here?
Where is that?
That's on the opposite side of you, unfortunately. But, but where they're so willing to do something like that, I mean, it would be probably worth your while to go talk to Mr. Brown or, you know, about, apparently, you know, he's very willing to let trees grow in for, you know, privacy. So, you know, he'd probably work with you.
There's a 20-foot drain easement.
That is there.
I'm not sure what's involved with that, whether there's way to be a slade or?
Yeah, they just put in the big?
That, that exists, right?
Oh, they just put the fence.
That exists since that, that subdivision was created many years ago.
Yeah. We just took a picture today, 'cause that, I guess, is the property line. So from where the surveyor, there's 40 feet. And then when you say a 20-foot easement, does that mean 20 feet more back on our side and on the other side?
This already exists.
Yeah.
That's there.
And that, I believe, that easement does run along the edge of your property.
Yeah, that's right. So this is 40 feet.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's just a concern with what, you know, would, is Mr. Brown here? No.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'd go, I'd go out of my way and contact him and talk to him about it.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, it sounds like he's agreeable, 'cause he's doing it on the other side.
I agree. I think he's very concerned about, about how everything looks and how the impact. I think he's very concerned about that and?
Can you give us contact information for him? Because we never have even seen his?
I was gonna say, it might be here.
Yeah, his address is right there. I know he's gonna have it.
Address is there.
If he were, if he proceeds with the driveway, is that another issue that would come up to a planning board meeting?
It comes to the selectmen, I believe, doesn't it?
The driveway permit goes to the road agent. The road agent has to sign off on it, and then the selectmen have to sign off on it as well.
Okay, so it's a two-step process when he decides to do that.
But the road agent basically just looks at the road and maybe 10 feet in. He's just worried about.
He wouldn't get noticed again, I believe, right?
No, you wouldn't.
Right.
Okay.
So we would see in the E-News that, that it was gonna be on the agenda, is that what you're saying?
Sure.
It may not be, because if you go to the road agent, it may not?
Would some of that come up when it goes before the selectmen?
It, we had a driveway permit tonight on there that was signed, that you guys signed.
Oh, so it would go to the selectmen.
Because they have to sign off on it before they can do anything.
Does it get listed on the agenda?
Yes, it was listed on the agenda as a driveway permit application.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
So would it?
You have to watch out there, because probably it just says the lot and parcel number. It might not say the owner's name.
That was really our, our only concern. There's a couple gorgeous evergreens that I paint, and they're, they're outside of that survey line. But I don't know if that's an easement.
Well, he can make his driveway be, you know, soft with a little bit of a curve, because that's a more inviting way to build a driveway anyway, you know, as long as it's enough so you can plow, of course. But I don't know him, but it would strike me that he would be the kind of person that would do that, you know. But I think, I think he's right. You, you should talk to him.
Sure.
Yeah, and I just, this is upside down. Okay, so this is, this is the house where we never see anybody, and then this is, okay. Come here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Simons.
My name's William Simons, and I am but the property. I own it with my brother, Robert Simons, and Virginia White. And we've had this since 1957, which our main property is this side here with two A-frames and a woodshed. And we come off of Tin Mine Road. And the town ways back, the Rockwells allowed us an easement to come in on the curve there so we wouldn't have a steep situation, which allowed us to have three families coming in on this side, the Tin Mine Road side. And the side, the lots that go in there are the Traftons. My middle name is William Trafton Simons. And so Dick Trafton and his family have the Trafton lot. And then there's the Simons lot that comes in off this driveway. And now the existing, the Browns' deed of right-of-way is to come along the bottom of the lot and come in. And Simons is supposed to do the same, but the Traftons have allowed us over the years to use a joint driveway. A little more history to this. We have one lot here, the Simons do. A ways back, my father bought three lots above Brown, above Simons, and above Trafton, because we were afraid we had shallow wells, that we wanted to protect the wells. So hence, my uncle bought the lot above them, and my father kept the lot above himself. And we ended up with the Brown lot that the Traftons didn't want. So the Simons has sub-zero, sub-one, and sub-two. And we sort of, the Simons family feels like this would be a good thing for Mr. Brown to gain access to his house or to his lot. It would be a shorter run for him, because he'd have to go to the bottom of two lots. Unfortunately, I don't have all my numbers, but it's like a 1,200-foot run in there. And then with the topography of the hills sloping up, he's then gotta come up three, four, two-thirds of the way on his lot to get to where most people want to build, like Laurie Gabriel wanted to build as high up as she could. And Brown would like to be up so he could have a good view. So if you took the contour line, this unfortunately comes in fairly close to their house, which is a smaller lot. But it seems to lie not just about, as we know with snow plowing in the winter, if you can go across, you're better off. And I don't know, I can't speak for the water. I do know there is sort of a stream that comes down this way, because Laurie Gabriel has this seasonal brook that she had to work on a fair amount. And that was solved, but I'm not sure it's as, as much up here. And maybe if he cites his house over here, it's gonna work pretty well. You might say, why is the Simons lot line such a screwball lot line here?
We don't say that. We have plenty of screwball lot lines.
I'll tell you what happened. When my father bought the lot, Brown actually had two lots. And after he bought it, my father was going up the lot line, and he said, oh, I just bought Mr. Brown's outhouse. So he calls him up, and he says, we have your outhouse, what do you want to do? And so?
Keep it.
So he, that's why the, the line was originally supposed to be straight. And so we slid it over this way, and Brown said, why don't you take a piece down there so in case we wanted a few amount of Washington, we could have it. But, and so that's sort of a little bit of the jiggling here, and?
Do you have any problem with this?
No, we don't.
We, we do still have this right-of-way that's on there that goes up to lot two and sub-one and sub-two.
But we don't plan to do anything with it. I prefer that, that Mr. Brown doesn't build a $3 million house right here in the corner. But I'd like to have a green zone here if the truth were known on both our sides.
He does have a 25-foot setback there.
Right, yeah. So, so, no, I, my answer is for, I think it's a win-win. Or let me put it this way. I think it's a solution to Mr. Brown, who for the past 50 years has been parking his car on the right-of-way, which you're not supposed to do, and walk in. So, and hold my breath. I swear to God, there are a number of fires, you know, campfires over the years. And every time I've set a prayer, there's no way the fire trucks gonna get in there. And, you know, we've been lucky, but, you know, and so if there was a better access for him?
That would help facilitate.
It would facilitate. So I'm sort of for it, but I also understand the issue that was just brought up, that this may be an encroachment on their view. And I, I don't know how to solve that. Any questions? I just thought it would be good to have somebody here where you're bottom on two sides. And I think this may be as good a solution as you can get for safety and access. So thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
I'm glad to ask, answer any other questions later on if something comes up.
All right, sports fans, are you ready to go after the checklist?
Sure.
Would you like to read, or you really want me to read?
Oh, you go ahead.
All right. So we have the proof of all application fees paid. Anything like that?
With the copies of the check or with the application?
Oh, that's this stack of?
No, with the application, I need copies of the checks that he and?
Okay.
What are these piles?
Oh, here we have check. All right. Do I want to look through that? If my word's okay?
I think it's good.
Fees paid, five print copies, subdivision plots. We have five. Do we have the MYLAR?
We do not have the MYLAR.
No, I didn't make the MYLAR. I wanted to make sure that there aren't changes. Sometimes, very often, the board has a note that needs to be added or something. So when it's agreed that this is the final one? That's right, and signatures go on the final one.
Location map clearly showing centered site location, adjacent name Rhodes. Looking good?
Yep.
Identifying title for proposed lot line adjustment, plot, title logs. All right, E-911, address for proposed lot. We have both of them.
Mr. Brown does not have one because he didn't have access to a real driveway? So until he has a real driveway, we can't request an E-911 address? I did look into that.
Right.
We often can't provide that.
Give that a check, because nothing can be done about it. Okay, an ownership chart, including printed and signed names of all owners for each involved lot.
The names but not the signature. And the signatures will be on the final plan when I know there aren't more revisions to the plan.
Okay, I have the note here, signed on the final plan.
Is that acceptable to the board? I mean, I real, I looked at that, and I worried very much about that. And it, it happens that Mr. Brown is very, very, very cautious about things that he signs. And I don't believe he liked the idea of signing what is today a preliminary plan. Now, maybe we don't make any changes and this becomes the final, but I wanted to be very cautious of, of his concerns. And yet, I want to give the board what they need.
We can do a conditional approval?
But it seemed like it was logical that the signatures go on the final plan.
Right, I don't think we'll stamp these tonight.
Right.
I think we'll wait, get the MYLAR. It'll be the same.
Have all the signatures?
She doesn't need to wait for another meeting, though.
Okay.
It'll just be a conditional approval if everything?
And then we'll get the MYLAR, and I can come in and sign it up.
Good.
And then copies and signed too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll have five print signed and the MYLAR signed. Yeah.
Okay, before adjustment and after adjustment, parcel acreages for each involved lot. Amount of acreage actually being exchanged in acres and square feet.
Oh, land exchange, right?
Yep.
Tax map and lot number of all lots involved in lot line adjustment. It's there. Butters names, tax map, and lot numbers, matching separate butters list.
All right, we've got the separate butters list.
All right, Laurie Gabriel. Darrell Brown. Robert L. Simons.
Yes.
Philip H. Peters. Gregory Peters. James and Ann Leonard.
Way down the lower right, left-hand corner.
Tin Mine LLC.
Also?
That's Trafton.
That's me.
Sorry.
Vincent Land Trust. Gravnick. Graving, sorry, trust. Lawson.
Athena Lawson, Gerardo Trust.
It's all of that.
Yep.
Athena Lawson.
Scott and Zachary Lawson.
Yep, Scott and Zachary. Moston.
Moston Hartford.
Ronnie. Uh, Alice Alden Realty Trust.
Yep.
Anita Finan Living Trust.
Yep.
Olap Family Trust.
Yep.
Sheila Burke.
Yep.
Joseph.
McCacken.
McCacken.
Thank you.
Check me.
Catherine Kirin's Living Trust. Jackson Conservation Commission.
And did you say with that family trust, I missed it?
Yes. You mean, where's Jackson Conservation Commission?
Oh, they're not, they're not on it, they were just, I'm sorry.
They hold the conservation easement.
Right, 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 right. I just realized that, sorry. And, cause then I saw Thaddeus Thorn survey, and they're also not really involved. Okay, so we got through the.
Yep, that works.
Butters list, and let me check that off.
Is it in the files?
Butters. Okay, name of involved zoning districts.
It's listed in the notes. Yep.
Minimum zoning frontage requirement.
That's listed in the notes.
To the notes.
Flat scale at one inch to a hundred feet or better. North arrow.
Not very fancy.
No, not one of the better ones.
Why?
Holy cow.
And it works.
Plan date. Wait a minute. Yeah.
Yep, that's right, yep, certification date.
I always liked the north arrow that was an arrowhead, oh, it's great. Uh, surveyor certification statement.
Uh, yes.
Certification.
Got it. Uh, boundary survey including bearings and distances from all lot lines, both current and proposed.
Yes.
I think I saw the number. All zoning ordinance setback lines, building setbacks, year round streams.
Yes.
Existing buildings and other human-made objects.
They appear to be on there. Yeah, they appear to be on there.
They're on there.
That's something on there. Uh, deed restrictions if any, copy of deed and statement indicating no knowledge of deed restrictions may be substituted.
Do you have a copy of the deeds?
Right.
The restrictions would be the conservation easement that exists, the proposed mutual green zone, the right of ways that exist. I believe that is.
I was saying, that would, that would give enough, that wouldn't give enough, but.
Okay, we've got all of those, we have the deeds here and notarized stamp, if anyone wants to read through them. I think that's approved. Okay, location of existing approved water supplies within two hundred feet of the involved lots show protective radii for all these water wells. Maybe I saw those. There's one there, there's one there.
They appear to all be there.
I believe they are. Uh, location of existing proposed sewers and septic systems within two hundred feet of the involved lots.
Outhouse cap.
That's not a water supply.
I don't see Roy's in here.
Is that it?
Must be it, there.
Okay.
It's a test pit.
We're good?
I don't see her septic system, is that?
That's it.
That is it?
That sort of trapezoid, because she can't, none of it can encroach on the protective radius around her wells, so they had to create it with a slightly different shape. They added the construction approval too, so that's indicative that it was approved.
Yep.
Location and names of all existing streets. Sometimes called them roads.
Yep.
Got it.
Uh, floodplain.
Grab the blade.
Yeah, not a whole lot of floodplain up there.
That was, we're in a lot of trouble. Okay, um, as far as the checklist, then we're just gonna be looking for signatures in the Mylar.
Second side.
Oh. So excited. So we'll just go next to the soil map, clearly indicating soil types and soil boundaries.
I don't think that really applies because this is an existing lot.
Right. So we're just.
Committing any construction in that new area.
Information about it in the notes.
It is there. So should we put a NA on that, or should we?
I would say so.
Okay, cause it doesn't. But anyway, they were, they were nice enough.
So much land being removed from one lot that it became.
Exactly.
Potentially.
Yeah, but that doesn't seem to be the case, and it doesn't appear that he'd be able to really construct anything there that would be a worry.
No, there's a setback that's coming into play there. Uh, okay, soils, minimum lot size demonstrating each proposed lot meets zoning minimum lot size requirement, state minimum lot size on the map.
Yes.
Okay, floodplain, no, surface waters clearly identified and delineated.
Surface waters, seasonal brook. Is there anything else? Um, some of the wetlands that are on her land.
So we're finding all that. All existing proposed easements, right of ways, buildings other than, other and other essential site features such as rock, ledge, and stone walls, and tree lines if at.
It has all of that, actually.
They appear to be shown.
Open space to be preserved.
It's on there.
Well.
It's not really applicable to this, but it's on there.
Right. So now we're going engineering sheets showing location details existing proposed, sort of that, and then we get to location of all test pits.
Now, there hasn't been one done on Mr. Brown's because he's doing it when and if he decides on a location for us, I've included the two that were on Lori's land that have been dug.
Subdivision regulation compliance statement.
We're not subdivided.
Right.
Yeah, that adjustment is a subdivision.
Yeah. I don't think it's a compliance statement anymore than.
Yep, I was there, check it, it's down the bottom, next to last one.
And then belief of rest is, you know, applicable copy of State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services subdivision certifications sheet, we're not asking for that. Copy of, you know, construction approval, not asking for that. Copy of wetlands, board certification, copy of state highway access, no performance guarantee, no, there's no performance here tonight. Open space dedication documents.
No, not applicable.
Condominium and homeowner association documents, no, no electric or utilities going through, so nothing from them. Thirty-foot access easement for subdivision, nope. Engineering calculation rate, calculations related to any proposed drainage ways.
No, we're not, um, there's an existing drainage easement already, but we're not approving any more surprises. You say that this, when it says per record plan or recorded plan, that, that is already there?
That's right, that's on the original subdivision.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Then I think that if we get the Mylar and the signatures, we're all set to go.
All right, excellent.
Do I hear A?
My second notion that we conditionally approve this application pending receipt of signed copies of Mylar.
I'll second it.
Are you first to do it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So let me carefully put all these documents back together, but stay with it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was just trying to help you.
My two copies of minutes.
So everyone's okay with the different signs? Yep, we will do that. Marvellous. Thank you very much.
Do this.
Thank you very much.
And I will drop, I will drop them off as soon as they make the ground through the mail, or if we decide we'll bring them up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Simons.
Thank you, and I think the utility thing, I would give them that, but probably not by this process.
Thanks.
And he'll do it underground, and he'll do it underground, right?
He might.
You know, it would be nice for them to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I got a, anything else on that?
In something like that, does there need to be another meeting if I'm waiting for this?
No, it's conditional, it's just a matter of signatures.
Check with. The formality of.
Right, but I understand instead of making a point for the next meeting, you can simply submit the Mylar and the sign.
Right. Whenever they show up, if you just give me a call, I'll come in and get the state of programs, write a name on it. Okay, moving along now, alteration of terrain permit, went to, lost all our.
We can go now.
Fans. Katura Construction got the alteration of terrain permit from DES.
It's been approved now?
Excuse me?
Has it been approved this?
Yes.
Okay.
It, this is the letter saying that it was approved. And it's just a heads up, there's nothing for us to do, although for the selectmen, it does say that any change from this plan, and I don't know if we get a plan from DES or.
We, we have the alteration, or it's somewhere here.
So anyway, if there, you know, something to keep an eye on, if there's any deviation from that, then they have to resubmit. And that's all this said.
It, it does bring up, and if you don't mind me mentioning this, it does bring up two issues, and, and the two of them are, the one is, if anyone knows, he, he cut a mile-long driveway and he's gonna build a house at the top, and he completely clearcutted the top, if you're driving up from Storyland, you can see the big missing trees. That just brings up the issue of ridgeline once again, and, and here's a case of it, he's gonna put a big house and it's gonna be incredibly obvious, it'll be more obvious to people in Bartlett than it will.
And where, where is this again?
This is up on Green Hill Road, but you see it as you're coming past Storyland and driving up, it'll be up on your left.
Oh, I, I.
You can see that big.
From my house.
Oh, you can see from your house, oh.
I can see it.
It's, it's going to be the first house that I can see from my house.
So it, it does bring up that, just for the planning board to think about, and then the second thing it brings up is six, seven, four, four, one, where he does not have road access, he bought an easement, and I think sixty feet, he said, I can't, I can't remember. But he could go either through us, the planning board, or the ZBA, or the selectmen, and I'm not sure what the selectmen process is, but I knew no art process, but if he went through us, he'd have to get a subdivision, make it a subdivision, he only wants to put one house, he's got a hundred acres, so he could easily put, you know, a dozen houses, but that is one of the ways in order for him to, he can't by law build on that, he did not know this, he put that road in, bought this property, and no one told him that, and that, that kinda concerned me, somebody along the line should have told him, and I happened to mention to him, and he went back to his horrid horizon who did the whole plan for the, you know, one mile-long driveway, and they went, oh yeah, well, that is true, you know, and they had never mentioned, so he's now gotta go to ZBA, or to us, or to the selectmen, but it's just something, we're gonna see a lot more of six, seven, four, four, one, as land gets more scarce, and people, you know, are gonna be building in more difficult areas in Jackson, land in Jackson is getting scarce and getting more valuable, just, just throwing it out there, we may wanna talk to the.
What is six, seven, four, four, one?
If you don't, I think I have the right number, I may not. Um, it, it's if you don't have footage, frontage on a class six or better, you cannot get a building permit. And you have to go to either ZBA and get a variance, or you can go to the planning board, subdivide, and we inside our subdivision regulations can give him a variance.
Lot is, does not.
Have frontage, he has an easement.
Easy, to force driveway, he has access.
We, we can't give a variance on frontage.
We can, we can on the, we can, if we, it's in our subdivision regulations, I believe, if they have sixty feet because of a road, that's how long a big road has to be, if they have sixty feet, I think it is in our subdivision regulations that we can give them a variance.
Well, I know they're fighting that out up on Black Mountain Road, how's Evans?
Yeah, I think the one across from you.
We can give a variance on the, the grade of the road, I thought we couldn't give any variance on frontage.
I believe we can, I think it's in our subdivision regulations, cause I, I underlined it and handed it to him, so I did read it and showed him inside our subdivision regula, just, just throwing that out there.
Okay.
But otherwise, if he gets an all-terrain permit, DES covers every drop of water that's gonna come off that property, and, you know, the, he's building a road essentially up to that, he's not building a driveway at this point. He builds roads for a living, so, you know, he can, you know, he has the ability to do it.
Then I got a letter from the Office of Energy and Planning, memorandum, looking for an update on the database. On our land use regulations.
Oh, so maybe they didn't receive, I mean, we, we haven't had any new ones since 2012, probably sent it in on 2012, is that what you mean?
It looks like some fellow named Scott Badger sent it in from the planning board. March of, mention that, is it?
They would want the building code adopted.
They sent a copy of the building code adopted.
And I'll send that back with that information, that this March we adopted the state building code.
Did you usually, did you send them electronic way or hard copy?
Uh, we're electronic.
No one minds, I'm going to pardon myself and go eat perfect cake.
By the way, there's, I don't see a place for old business, but I would like to comment, because the Conway Pine's part, I did check on it, there's not a single resident there who's receiving Section Eight, with that comment last year, next meeting. Wish people might be getting it.
All right.
Good evening.
Happy birthday.
Yeah. Give her a big kiss.
I'll tell Ann Eady. Thank you.
The build-out proposals. Everyone here had a good opportunity to read through the build-out proposals. I have, so. And I have them with me. Any ideas, any suggestions, any comments on the build-out proposals?
Do people who haven't read it need a summary of the pre-proposals?
I don't think these folks need a summary.
I could do the summary, sure.
Well, all right, I just went through them this afternoon. There are three proposals.
North Country Council, Maine Nemo, and.
FB Environmental.
FB Environmental.
Bill.
Forrest Bell.
Forrest Bell. The main one is from, they call them Nemo, and it's, it looks like it is Spatial Alternatives and James Sewell Company, this is, this is a group that has done a lot of stuff for municipal organizations, looking for water resources, sustainable approach to development, particularly water resources, and watersheds, watershed analysis, and so on. And they have only, as far as I could see, they've only done some work in Maine, they really have done nothing, nothing up here in New Hampshire.
They've done one at the South Key, Watershed Analysis Plan. That's on page four.
Okay. And their cost, the budget for fairly extensive analysis and so on was eighteen thousand for the scope of work out in the hole. And looking at, there are a list of things that they look at seem to be pretty well, sort of general, not specific to our situation. So there are a lot of things that they say they'll look at which may not even be applicable. So it, they struck me as being a little, the outsider, and having to learn all about Jackson before you even get there.
And what do we have for money available?
Fifteen.
Fifteen thousand was allocated by the town, I think, for the entire master plan study for this year. And so I think our hope was that we wouldn't go over around ten, but we realized it might be twelve thousand that would be needed.
What I saw with the Nemo's was that it's a group, there would be separate subcontractors doing various parts of it. And I, I'm sure it works, they seem to be more involved in much larger environments. A lot of parking lots and water quality and permeable parking lots, and so I kind of.
Coastal.
A lot of coastal.
Yeah.
The NMA, because they're an old town. North Country Council is Tara Bamford, planning coordinator, and with the Tara and then her GIS person, name, quick. Anyway, the two of them have extensive planning experience right here in the North Country, and she's on, you know, North Country Council's been dealing with issues here in the North Country all along. James Steele is their planner, and both of them have been with North Country Council for a while, and they've been doing this. Their scope of work is not just doing the build-out, but also looking at several issues that really have to do with master plans. So they, they realize that the build-out is just part of the whole master plan process. And so they see how they would be then relating it, not just to the local and regional situation, but also to leading up to, realizing this is a tool for the larger piece, and then also having had extensive experience with the larger piece, be able to help us with that.
Which is that one?
That one is the basic, for the build-out analysis is eight thousand five hundred, and they have two optional additional steps, which is, one, which is a visioning session, public workshop to provide the planning board with input needed to review and update the visual statement at the beginning of the master plan, review the goals, and community, and if a community survey's planned, to begin developing questions to include in that. And they would meet with the planning board to plan it, to develop a fire, and they would facilitate the workshop and provide a summary report. That would be additional three thousand dollars, and then they could also do, conduct what's sometimes called a regulatory audit, review of the master plan and land use regulations to assess consistency between the goals and the future. And emphasis would be on land use and natural resources. And that results in being presented to the public along with examples of some tools that could be used to further the community goals, while taking into account the interests of private landowners, and that would be for an additional twenty-five hundred. So those are two other things that they could do as a North Country Council.
And in the proposals, I know that there's beliefs that the more digitized our maps are, the more that'll facilitate at least the build-out analysis. Do we now know where we're at, and that was provided to these?
Yes, as I understand it, all the maps are digitized and can easily be worked with through, I guess, the Granite system. The houses, the location of residences is not part of it, and so there may be some need to identify, if it's a large lot that might accommodate several houses or something, rather than they need to pinpoint locations.
Then the third one from Forrest, Forrest Bell, this, he has, it's his own consulting firm, which consists of him, and he now has a, an assistant who is fresh out of college, working on his PhD right now. And Forrest Bell's the one who did the build-out plan for Conway and Eaton, as well as Lake Wentworth build-out analysis.
And he came here, actually, and presented to the planning board, visual was that kind of what he did?
Like, he was, he was the one that sort of told us about the possibility of doing a build-out.
Exactly, got to start thinking about it.
Right, and so he would do, you would do the build-out, and what they do is get all the basic information and put it in, and then they have this software, which is called, something like this. Anyway, it's a program, Community Biz.
Community Biz, yeah.
It's a visual GIS-based program, and, and so it's almost as if it's a, you plug all your numbers in, and then the program will spit it out, and it, the program makes various assumptions, and you can maybe alter some of those assumptions. But that's all built into the program as opposed to, you know, looking at, like, what North Country Council would do would be probably more site-specific and with a little knowledge of the area, rather than relying on whatever's, the software engineers have put into the program. And their total budget would be eight thousand nine, seven hundred, and they have a couple of add-ons. Optional tasks would be a Google Earth file creation for extra four hundred, or identify key development areas for a thousand.
One interesting thing, as you look at comparing the two that are closest, you know, given the fact that Nemo is so high, we probably won't discuss that much more, but with the North Country Council, their total cost up to the community visioning, not including the public workshop where things are presented, is eighty-five hundred. FB Environmental is eighty-seven hundred, including the presentation to people. So North Country Council charges us an additional three thousand or that, but it's already included in the eighty-seven hundred if we were to choose FB Environmental, is that the way you read it too?
Might want to make sure.
No, though they'd be presenting, if on North Country Council, there's step seven, they present the results in public meeting.
Yeah, but not with a community visioning.
And I'm not sure that, that Forrest Bell does a community visioning.
Well, when you look at his task nine, doesn't it, it says, we utilize aspects of a community visioning process during the meeting by soliciting and incorporating feedback from meeting participants.
Oh, you mean the public meeting, oh, sorry, come on, Paige. John, not that one. It's in the books.
The one that's hidden in there.
Right, 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 although. Go up, go up, go up.
Yeah, you can, if you bend over, you can look at it.
Getting warm.
All right, I'll go this way.
You guys can keep talking, I got it. You guys can keep talking.
Okay.
Put the glasses on, after all that. Well, I like the more site-specific approach as opposed to the software, you know, bits. It's hard to say without knowing how much the software can be tweaked, but so long as the non-software approaches that has sophisticated in its product.
It sounds as though that their GIS guy, Steele, has had extensive experience with Granite.
Yes, James Steele.
NARTS, USGS.
Yep. He's been there a long time.
Of course, DRA's, so that he's been doing this type of stuff, he's had all the experience with, with the information that we would be using.
So not using software, do they just go?
Well, no, they would use software, you know, GIS, but they don't, then it's, they're not using the software for the analysis.
Right.
They're using, you know, the software to get all the data there, and then the analysis.
Yeah, I think they're both doing that, right?
Yeah, the, the beginning part of it, as far as getting all the data together, all three would probably be doing, getting the same database, because we'd be supplying it to them. But the, the first two would be familiar with the whole, what's available at the state level.
And so how in Jackson, since we have our soil-based lot size?
Yep.
How is that accomplished through something like this, since it sort of requires a sort of study?
When you look at their assumptions, for example, in North Country Council, they talk about develop assumptions, including the percentage of land to be taken up with rows and utilities, and therefore excluded from individual lots. The percentage to be developed is non-residential versus residential, and the percentage is undevelopable, if any, due to slope or wetlands, beyond that that's factored into soil-based lot sizes. So they know us enough to know that we have that.
Yeah, and I don't know whether the soil surveys are digitized, whether that's a layer in Granite or not.
Yeah, I don't know either.
Because if it is, then that's easy enough to, to then determine, okay, with this particular soil size, you have this, this soil type, we have this lot size, so that you can plug into the, get the computer right.
One thing really in North Country Council's favor is that they, they really know the North Country, they really know this area. But then again, FB, having been working with Conway and Eaton, there's a lot of similarity.
North Country Council is really a good resource on master plan.
Yep, absolutely.
That's the, for me, that's the kicker, is they go right into, you know, they're a resource. If we had questions on just developing the master plan, we could call them, I mean, they would be a resource for us, so I find them.
Remember, right? I asked them what their cost would be for master plan development, if they were to take it on, and I think she said somewhere between eight and ten thousand, so that's more than what we were figuring on.
But we can always call them if they have questions.
Absolutely.
Right, what, they understand what we're doing, that we're not just.
And they bring that out in part of their proposal, they talk about maybe with the planning board to discuss assumptions, and working on master plan elements and so on.
You know, I see them, you know, leading into master plan, well, Forrest Bell, he would do the build-out, and he would deliver that, do that nicely, and then it's up to us to then utilize that however we want.
Okay. Ready to decide? Any further discussion?
Was there any feedback from Conway as far as what FB did, or?
Conway was not the contractor of it, I don't know if it was the Upper South Valley Land Trust or what, Conway did not pay for it.
They, I called.
They asked us to, because we were a member, and Conway wasn't, North Country Council. Sort of like to sponsor.
Wasn't part of North Country Council, the ones that did Conway and Eaton, that was the SB group.
Yeah.
Yeah, I called down the Conway Town Office, and we had nothing to do with it. It came to them, but, you know, they didn't contract it, or.
Has anybody worked with Tara, Tara Bamford or James Steele?
Bamford, yes, I have. She's been a planner for a long time, she used to be involved with, I forget, it was the Southern New Hampshire or Upper Valley, but she was involved with them for a long time before she came over to head the planning department at North Country Council. And that was probably six years ago that she came over.
Yeah, I think I've worked a little bit with her and stuff.
Well, I think tonight's the night to make the decision.
I think too, personally, I think that it sounds like Forrest has some good experience and background. PhD student, you know, working through that, just doesn't have experience.
Right.
And certainly if you're working with software that has a lot of assumptions, and, you know, where you need to tweak the conditions, experience might count for something, you know, that type of thing. You know, that type of thing.
And his experience, he doesn't even have a BAE, I think it was an associate's and then he was in wildlife management. Anyway, his, his resume is fairly light.
He's a PhD candidate in wildlife ecology department, University of Maine. I wouldn't question his qualifications, I'm sure that Forrest is, you know, very careful with hands.
Oh, yeah, he's qualified.
Oh, he's plenty hands-on, I mean, I think he's learned a lot.
It's more the experience thing, I mean, I'm sure that he knows his stuff, it's just.
He's been using GIS for the past five years. Dark waters, dilutions. I think it's a hard choice.
What do you see as the, as what FB offers that North Country Council doesn't? And then it sounded like maybe a little bit lower price if we include the vision part of things.
Yeah, I think that FB's price is a little bit lower. They don't include helping us to set up new master plan holes and so on as part of what they described. I see that as the major drawback. But then again, is that what we want? And we, do we need their help? Do we, would we be using that, that's an additional, that's part of their additional three thousand dollars? Is that something we'd use? I don't know.
I guess my thought is that even if we weren't to use that as they're going through the build-out, they're still doing it with.
It's in their mind.
A master plan in mind, and so.
It's in the back of their mind.
But not that, you know, Forrest Bill. You know, I'm guessing that most of the time when these, you know, when a build-out is done, it's part of a master plan process and so, you know, maybe the, you know, Forrest is.
Well, the one for Eaton, Conway and Eaton was just for that, it wasn't part of the Conway's master plan.
Right.
Whoever, I think we need to invite in for a face-to-face meeting so that we can hammer out the costs. So, I'd like to get that pretty well set ahead of time. No surprises.
You mean, once we sort of, once.
Once we make our decision, then have that entity.
And it'll be this selectman that makes the final decision? Because they're the ones paying the bill? Or do we make the final decision?
Go with your recommendation, I would think, if you guys do all legwork on it.
Okay, good. But you'd make the final decision because it would be counted on a, I would guess, I don't know.
We send the checks.
I'm leaning toward going with North Country Council.
Me too.
I am?
Me too.
I think so.
Glad you support that.
Okay, let's vote it then.
Okay, I'm making a motion that we choose North Country Council as the, the group to do the build-out.
I'll second that.
All in favor? And the opposed? Let's get it done. Excellent.
So then, we send that off to the selectmen and you guys meet when?
Uh, two weeks.
Two weeks from today.
So, I've been getting a lot of requests from not just these bidders, but others, you know, for the information and I'm just, I've been responding, we're small town, we make decisions totally.
I mean, there are other groups that wanted to do the build-out?
No, but there are, there are three or four companies that have contacted me saying, who have you decided on? You know, I don't know what they're looking for, but.
Who would just say we made a recommendation to the selectmen and it's in their hands now? Sorry, John.
Surprising, okay.
What kind of companies?
Other ones like this.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, and, because it was a contractor who does roads, I mean, God knows, because see, the way we got this out there was through the local government center. They recommended against our putting it in the newspapers because apparently it was being not really seen by all of the companies that might want to go. Whereas by getting it on the local government center of site, that's I think why Nemo showed up.
So, are you guys gonna have them in for a meeting before you go to the selectmen to make sure you have the cost name and other after?
No, I think that we just hammer that out, as far as I can see, we've made the decision, if the selectmen choose to do something.
We made a recommendation.
Yeah.
Different, then that's what, they'll pass that back to us. When that happens, whoever it is, we're gonna have them come in and we'll really sit down.
We'll need to work on the contract.
Right. And get the financials right in line because I really don't want to leave any open ends on.
Right, well, you need to have, you know, expectations listed, that's what, so we all know what we expect them to do and they know what we are expecting.
It'll be another month before we get it in there, isn't it, probably, right?
Yeah. Well, and I think it said in the RFP that we wanted them to start no later than September.
Okay.
And we have their report ready before the end of fall.
November, yeah. Is that something you guys maybe need to do before the workshop next week to get it in more time than you have?
We could probably put that, we could probably do that as like a special agenda item, maybe.
On that.
We have the whole public session though for that, we have to notarize it, note it as a public session.
Right, actually, part of the.
Work with all those guys to see if they want to, okay? Get moving on, I just need to see the drag any longer, it just takes a while.
Right. Anything you can help move along.
Yeah, definitely. Good idea, y'all.
Okay, moving along now on my agenda. I had thought that we'd start framing up the questions of the community survey. And I think to use the last one as a model, but we obviously have a number of new issues and new questions and new ways to phrase those questions. So, the only reason I put it on there was to get people thinking about it and make sure everybody got a copy of the old one.
I didn't get a copy of the old one, though.
Okay.
Did you get an email from me right after the last meeting?
Do you want this, so I can pick one up?
That's fine. I sent an email around with a variety of documents in it. Why, I remember this, yeah. There's all of that. One page?
Two sides, legal file.
Right, legal page.
Super legal, super legal.
And then it went out in color coding.
Yep.
So that, you know, voting residents were one color.
That's discrimination.
Non-voting.
No, no.
No, I think it's a really accurate way to get.
I'm just kidding.
No, people didn't, who got surveyed had no recollection of the color, that was simply pretty easy to sort with results.
No, I'm just teasing.
It's easier to sort that than the color.
I don't believe it, so there's only.
Okay, so that's homework for everybody.
I have, we did some brainstorming at the April meeting on various issues. I took some notes and we can make any sense out of these. What I was thinking that you were wanting to do is maybe to not necessarily look at the last survey right away, but just thinking of maybe just topics that we would want to get townspeople's opinions on. As far as issues that come up, is that maybe need to be addressed by the master plan.
Yes.
And one of the issues I had would be the Route sixteen corridor, as to, so that would be the village. Right, find out, just as far as the survey, to find out what public opinion is on that. And then the school, I guess the school is seeing declining enrollment coming up in the next years, as all the schools in Bailey are, I think. So, the premium school question. As I recall, they were wrestling with when we moved into town in ninety-three.
They were gonna close the school. So, we came through, well, they were seventeen in the school.
You, you and your family and I and my family contributed and so ended up with a class of fourteen, so, to go through the school.
That went from Jessica, who at one point was her class. She was that, well, I can't remember which grade.
So, a hundred percent of the students in that class were doing.
Have done well. Have moved on.
Right. All the way through medical school and beyond, right.
Yeah. Hey, she's a card-carrying licensed pediatrician now.
Ooh.
And she's signed up now, she's gonna be chief resident finally. You always celebrate too soon.
So, one of the issues, and it's maybe part of your Route sixteen part, is do we want to just continue with two districts in town? Or are we interested in more than two, however the divisions might be?
And other other districts. So, if we're going to have that in that survey, we ought to, well, what other kind of districts would you have? I mean, right now, we've got the overlay district of the.
That's right, the River Conservation.
River Conservation. And we've vetted about the idea of Ridgeline, which Larry mentioned earlier, this is the Ridgeline Protection Zones or something, I don't know, I'm just throwing out ideas.
And the river supply, is the water supply for downtown, do we want to address?
We've got the holy river, so.
Protection of that any further, you know, is there any, anything else we can do?
We had a golf course on a network for it, so I think.
Drill some wells and not take groundwater as, or surface water as the drinking water, anyway.
Another topic.
And do we want to look at some of the non-conforming uses and see if there are ways that we're comfortable adapting our regulations so that there are fewer non-conforming circumstances? You know, an example out there is the hotels, do we want to allow hotels? Maybe we don't, maybe we do. At this point, we don't allow any other schools. What if Black Mountain fails and somebody wants to put some sort of a school there? Is that something we should be considering?
You don't allow schools?
Just the grammar schools, no schools are allowed in the.
Are you talking private or public?
Any. I believe our current wording says that you can't have a school in Jackson.
I believe that's.
Those just take a while. What was the rationale behind that? It's the Wildcat Academy years ago.
Yeah.
Mr. Ward.
That would have been interesting.
Well, you've had a school on this property, do you remember? Joe from National Inquants from New York.
What would you, does anyone know what the construction was?
Yeah, so it says private educational facilities excepting nonprofit facilities for preschool-aged children.
Which we have at the church.
Right.
So, I guess you could have a public school up there, but the chances of our getting another public school in town are pretty slim, too.
Cancer quibble, yeah.
University of Jackson.
University of Jackson, hey.
That might be.
Jackson State.
Well, then, there's also the issue of businesses in the rural residential district. Right now, you've got, you can only have customary home businesses, which are, it's very strict.
Three employees or something.
Yeah, three employees and the building has to be, the majority of the building is to be used as residential, not as commercial.
Right.
So, you might want to look at that if you're worried about expanding employment opportunities and other industries beside, well, industry, that's in quotes, besides the tourism.
Okay, good thoughts. My last thing is a conversation I had with Burr Phillips on his take on making it easier for in-law apartments. And one was the septic system designs. If you add on to an existing system, you can design it for one more bedroom and one kitchen, which would be two-hundred-and-twenty-five gallons a day. If you do a freestanding system, it has to be two-bedroom and a kitchen design, which is three-hundred gallons a day. So, by adding on to an existing system, you can make a smaller impact. This other idea was that it's, and it has been approved in other situations. It's possible to have the design for the larger system in place, but not built until the present system fails. So, you could have an in-law apartment go in, and I'm thinking of one in particular where the family has now grown and the kids are gone. So, now we're down to two people in the house and he'd like to put in an in-law apartment for one of the other parents if it comes to that. If he didn't have to design, or if he had the design for the replacement system in place, but didn't have to build it, it would make it a lot easier for him to turn this in. And the impact on the system would probably be less than it was when those kids were growing up and taking four showers a day, twenty-minute, thirty-minute showers and all that. Anyway, so there's actually, you know, a reason to allow that to happen. So, those were his two ideas right off the top of his head.
So, that would be changing zoning amendments to the zoning ordinance on concerning accessory apartments.
So, the way it's currently phrased is that that state-approved system sufficient to serve both shall be in place before any construction or renovation is added, is done. So, we should say that a plan for it and it shall be done if it is deemed necessary?
If it fails.
Yeah, I don't think it's wrong to use the word fail because septic systems fail every year. They have to be rebuilt and there is a replacement design. I mean, you gotta figure it out, but I don't think we should shy away from when it fails. Okay, any old business? Any new business? Would anyone like to go home?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Let's go home.
Oh, I don't, no, those are yours.
Let's go home.
Thank you all.